We have no presentations. We have appointment.
Reappointment.
To the Southfield Public Art Commission. Is that you, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Reappointment. Appointment to the Public Art Commission.
(laughing).
You're here?
I'm here now.
Okay, we can get started now.
Well, I just wondered if you forgot.
President, reappointment to the Public Art Commission? So I'd like to, Robert McTaggart, I don't believe is here. I think he's out of town. He would be the reappointment. Robert has served for the last couple of years on the Public Art Commission. And I'd like to introduce to the council Yvonne Malinsky. If Yvonne would come forward. Good evening. So this is my, Yvonne would be filling the vacant, there's a vacancy on the, on the Art Commission. This was one of the extra positions that was added and didn't get filled immediately. So I recommend her appointment. She's been a Southfield resident for decades.
Thirty years.
Thirty years. I remember Ms. Malinsky when her children were little and she was a PTA mom at Adler School. That's how long I've known her. And they're, they're big people now.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the appointment and reappointment for the Southfield Arts Commission as outlined by the mayor.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Cruz, that we appoint the young lady as presented by the mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
I would also add that Ms. Malinsky is recently retired from Ford Motor Company, and she worked in graphic arts for the company and design. We'd like to ask the clerk to come and swear you in and make this official.
And Mr. Mayor, when she finishes, you want to have her come?
Sure. Okay.
...the State of Michigan and the Charter of the City of Southfield, according to the best of my ability, for, is the Arts Commission?
Yes, Public Art.
For Public's Art Commission. I do. Sign your name right there for me. Congratulations. Thank you. You're welcome.
The first meeting is coming up over the next Tuesday. Next Tuesday, not tomorrow. And we'd like to attach you this, and then the council would like to meet.
(coughing). Is she here?
(inaudible).
Then you're in a pile.
Oh, great. Nice to meet you.
My pleasure.
Hello. Congratulations.
Thank you for calling.
Thank you.
I'm hoping for you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you too.
Okay.
Thanks for being here, sir.
(coughing).
The next item on our agenda is the minutes of January 22, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for January 22, 2018.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Morris and supported by Mr. Mandelbaum that we approve the regular minute, regular meeting minutes of January 22, 2018. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. The minutes of January 22, 2018 is approved as presented. Next item is, will be our consent agenda. And I would like to remind our audience that we, our consent agenda items are extensive. They're a lot of paper, and there's a lot of words and verbiage, and I will just pretty much give a summary and primarily give the fiscal impact. But I would encourage you to go to the city clerk's website and look at the council meeting minutes in our agenda, and you can see all the detail there, just in case you want additional detail that I'm not presenting. The first item is a brown, brownfield development plan and tax increment financing plan and the development reimbursement agreement for 30915 Southfield Road. It's a gas station redevelopment. This particular groundfill plan will allow the owner developer to develop the southwest corner of Southfield Road and 13 Mile. The proposed project encompasses the demolition of the former building for the new construction of a 3,800 square foot larger C-store. Total investment is approximately $1,500,000 to $2,000,000. The project will create 14 full-time jobs and six part-time jobs. Consent agenda item B. The City of Southfield, this deal with the budget of DTE Energy Improvement Grant. The City of Southfield recently took part in the, in two DTE Energy Improvement Grants. The City purchased and installed energy-saving LED T8 lights and was reimbursed for a portion of the purchase price. 28-watt fluorescent bulbs were replaced with 17-watt LED bulbs. The fiscal impact specifically, the City recently expended $9,776.32, and we received back $9,712.80 for a difference of $63. This item was discussed in the February 20, in the February 5, 2018 Committee of the Whole Meeting. It is recommended that the council accept the grant funding from DTE and approve an increase in the facilities maintenance repair and maintenance account. Consent agenda item C, Southfield Police Department Police Training Room Conversion. The Police Department has relocated the records division from the second floor to the first floor of the police building to make more, to make it more accessible and convenient for residents, in addition to increasing security of the building. The vacant space on the second floor is now being converted to a training room. The fiscal impact of this move will be, the training room conversion will cost 1,000, I mean $19,850. And these particular funds will come out of the existing federal forfeiture fund. That in essence, is no impact on the Southfield budget. This comes out of the forfeiture fund that our Police Department participated in. Consent agenda item D, Authorization to Replace, Authorization to Purchase Replacement Vehicles for the Police Department. Council gave authorization within the 2017-2018 budget to purchase various replacement vehicles as indicated. Fiscal impact, the expenditure of $391,070 in funding is provided in the 2017-2018 Motor Pool Equipment Replacement Account. In total, there will be 13 vehicles are recommended for replacement. Consent agenda item E, the Clemis, Southfield Police Department Court and Law Enforcement Management Information System, Clemis reimbursement. This is a reimbursement from this particular fund. Clemis is a regional law enforcement management information system. The City through the Police Department has been a member of this consortium since 2007. Clemis provide, Police Department provides the Police Department with computer-aided dispatch, mobile data computers, law enforcement information network, record management systems, electronic citations, crash reports, crime mapping, as well as information and other system support. Clemis also provides residents the ability to purchase crash reports online. The Police Department has identified several projects for this particular fund, and I'm just going to highlight a couple of them. The Guardian Tracking is a, is a piece of software program that is being used by many agencies to consolidate their personnel files and improve file management. Another item that will be purchased here would be, the Police Department is requesting a forensic cell phone extraction software system. And additionally, the animal control officer will benefit from two additional pieces of equipment. The Supertalent Animal Catcher often offers a humane way, a humane alternative to using the, I'm going to start over on this one. The Supertalent Animal Catcher offers a humane alternative to using deadly force in the capture of fleeing animals. The fiscal impact is, there's, there's a neutral fiscal impact on the City of Southfield. The funds will be dispersed by Clemis upon request by Chief Hawkins. We are requesting a budget adjustment of $55,000 of various Police Department expenditure accounts and an equal increase in Police Department revenue. And the purchasing department is already out seeking quotes, bids on this, on these particular items. Consent agenda item F, the Authorization to Replace the Hirsch Extraction Rescue Two. This is from the Fire Department. These are the jaws of life. Council gave authorization within the, within the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget to purchase and update replacement set of battery-operated Rescue Twos. Accordingly, we are asking council to approve the purchase, to purchase this rescue equipment through the City, through the City of Rochester Hill by the Mitten Cooperative Purchasing Program. The fiscal impact here is the expenditure told is $28,000, and funding will be provided in the fiscal 2017-2018 Fire Department Operating Supplies Account. Consent agenda item G, the receipt of bid for Rescue Task Force Personnel Protection Equipment for the Fire Department. A little narrative here is, with recent active assailant incidents occurring throughout the country, victims need urgent care to treat their wounds. Victim need, victim need medical treatment immediately, sometime prior to law enforcement completing their quarantine or removal of all suspects. The Fire Department indicated that best practices identify that department members will need a Level III ballistic vest, helmet, safety goggles, storage bags, and tactical medical supply bags to accomplish their vital mission. Two sets of gear, two sets of gear will be housed at each Fire Department, Fire Departments number one through five, with additional medical equipment being located with the EMS Coordinator and Training and Safety Officer. The purchase in the apartment has received bids on December 1, 2017 for the purchase of the personal protection equipment, and the low bid was Bound Tree Medical of Dublin, Ohio, at $17,534.50. Fiscal impact, funding for this purchase is provided in our fiscal year budget 2017-2018 Station Operating Supplies. Consent agenda item H, purchase of high-speed voting equipment for absentee ballots. In January 2017, the Secretary of State Office for the State of Michigan approved new election equipment for the State of Michigan to replace the present outdated equipment throughout the state. On December 18, 2017, the City Council approved a resolution authorizing the purchase of a high-speed tabulation, of a high-speed tabulator for approximately $62,065.00. Due to software enhancements of the high-speed tabulator, excuse me here, my tablet decided to jump around. On December 17, council approved a resolution authorizing the purchase of high-speed tabulator for approximately $62,065.00. Due to software enhancement of the high-speed tabulator, there's an additional cost of $5,045. Increase in the total purchase price of the high-speed tabulator to $67,110. The fiscal impact of this item is, the cost of the high-speed tabulator is approximately Currently, the clerk office budget has enough money allocated in account, in their accounts to purchase the high-speed tabulator. Consent agenda item I, is the resolution revoking the commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate number C-206-019 for Providence Place Holding LLC, at 16176 Cumberland Consent agenda item J, the resolution revoking commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate number C-2016-020 for Loop Providence Tower LLC, 16,309 Mile Road, Southfield, Michigan. Consent agenda item K, request to submit an application for funding for the community foundation, funding from the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan as the fiduciary for the Dr. Martin Luther King Task Force. I'm going to redo that. We request to submit application for funding from the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan as the fiduciary agent for the Dr. Martin Luther King Task Force. Fiscal impact, the City is proposing to act as a fiduciary agent on behalf of the Dr. Martin Luther King Task Force. There's no fiscal impact. The funds will be dispersed to the City, and the City will disperse those funds to the Dr. Martin Luther King as needed and, and as approved in, in the grant from the Community Foundation. Council, I've heard, you've heard the consent agenda items. What are your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve consent agenda items A through K.
Support.
It was removed by, it was moved by Mr. Mandelbaum and supported by Mr. Cruz that we approve consent agenda items A through K. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Consent agenda items are approved as presented. We will now go into the communication portion. Excuse me, I'm sorry. We have, right, public hearing. As I've, as I've indicated, on numerous times, I have a need for speed, and sometimes I will just plow right ahead, and I'm reminded that I had to back up and deal with some items that I might have jumped over and looked at. But we do have a public hearing, Mr. Deal with PSLU 17-0012, Special Use Request.
Through the, through the chair. As stated, we only have one public hearing tonight. It's PSLU 17-0012, a special use request of NOR, on behalf of the owner, Advance LLC, for the construction of a 2,977 gross square foot freestanding restaurant with drive-through on property located at 23077 Greenfield Road, on the northwest corner of Greenfield Road and West Nine Mile. There's also a second part, which is the site plan. We're going to present them all at this time, but you need to vote on them separately.
Excuse me.
You'll need to vote on them separately. So again, the property at West Nine Mile, Greenfield. The particular site for the proposed drive, freestanding restaurant is up here on the northeast portion of the property. These are existing conditions. Currently, there's a three-story parking structure. It's currently Zoned B3. The property being impacted by the rezoning, or excuse me, the special land use is shown here in red. Then there's also the site plan review for construction of a 6,000, 6,800 gross square foot retail center, in addition to the standalone restaurant and demolition of the front portion of the existing parking structure. You can see it faintly here. This dash line represents the existing footprint of the parking structure, so about 20, 25% will be removed for the, for the new construction and new circulation around the site. This is a detail. Mr. Fraser at our study session was concerned about circulation. There are nine feet for parallel parking, the minimum 20-foot for one-way traffic, 12 additional feet for a dedicated drive-through lane, and then another 13 feet for off-hour loading. And one of the conditions of the special use is to have the loading and unloading at off-peak drive-through hours. This is the breakdown of the retail center and the freestanding restaurant. And then I'm going to turn it over to the applicant, Mr. Nager. He's going to talk about some of the proposed improvements for their existing structure. That's not under consideration tonight, but some of the architectural detail plays in hand with the proposed new structure and the refacing of the garage.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks, Terry. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. My name is Brian Nager. Address, 600 North Old Woodward, Suite 100, Birmingham, Michigan. And I'm here to discuss the redevelopment and addition to the advanced building here in Southfield. Some of you are already familiar with this, and we've gone through some, some discussion on it already in the study sessions, but we'd like to bring everybody else up to speed, so I'll try to make it brief and, and open it up for questions after. So the, the advanced building, as everybody knows, is a excellent location in the City of Southfield. With the, the new developments going on for Northland, this, this is going to be a much improved plan for the advanced building. We're looking at updating the facade of the advanced building. We're also making some improvements inside, but separately, we are trying to enhance the, the mixture at the advanced building. So the proposal tonight is for the retail center, and that's to create more of a mixed use type, use for the site. And we, we've, you know, Terry teed it up with the, the retail square footage, approximately 10,000 square feet, and, you know, a reduction in the parking deck over there, so.
Want to scroll through the presentations?
Sure. Are we pointing this, Terry?
Here.
Oh, good. I got you. This would be an example of what we plan to do with the, the front, and part of the reason behind this is because we're trying to enhance the, the medical use in the building. Being in close proximity to Providence Hospital, we feel like the need for medical space is there, so we're, we're trying to promote pickup and drop-off of patients and give them a covered area to walk in and out of. This just shows some of the facade improvements. What we're trying to do here is to add this material. I don't know if we can, the material you see here is called Longboard. It's a, it's a wood-looking material, but it's made out of metal. It gives a, it gives a really nice upgraded, modern look to a building that, that could definitely use some improvements aesthetically. This shows the, the rendering of the parking structure as if we were standing out at Greenfield looking in. Part of the discussion that we had at the study session was, when you're looking at the shopping center from Greenfield, one of the council members made the comment, when we're looking through between the two buildings, we were, we were looking at a lot of concrete. So what we did was we shifted some of the, some of the Longboard material here. We ended up shifting that over to the, this would be south, so that the split between the two buildings is about right here. We took some of that nice material, we shifted it from here to here, so that aesthetically you would be able to see that as you're driving by. Most of the building, most of this parking deck is going to be covered by the shopping center, the new shopping center. You'd probably see the top three to four feet of that, and by doing this, we're going to see the top three to four feet, as well as this, I believe, 15 or 20-foot break between the shopping center. So that'll be really nice. There it is again, and this is the shopping center superimposed on that. So as you're looking at the, the complex from Greenfield, this is what you'd be seeing. Freestanding building here, 3,000 square feet, and the multi-tenant center right there. This is a view from the back, the sides, and an example of some of the materials that we're using. This right here is the, the Longboard material. So, pretty new and very nice, actually, so.
I'll go back to the side.
Yep.
The public hearing is now open. No, we have, yes ma'am, come forward, please. Laying it back. Please give your name and address.
Thank you for acknowledging me. My name is Angel. I live at 18837 Fillmore Street, Southfield, 48075. I was just curious and wanted to pose a question. What is going to be in the freestanding building? And then do you also currently have retail tenants? That's a pretty tight squeeze over on that Greenfield Mile Road area there.
Public hearing is still open? Please give your name and address, please.
Good evening, council members. I just basically wanted to say that I'm in total support of the special use request.
Ma'am, ma'am, turn the mic off. Turn the mic off. Ma'am, we have a rule here.
And I do not have to give my name because it's already on the record.
We don't want people coming here thinking this is the way we act. Give us your name and address if you want to talk. But who is, who is controlling the camera? Turn the mic off.
You're wasting my time.
You're wasting my own time. Please be seated. You're, you're no longer, if you're not going to play by the rules, you can't speak. Anybody else for the public hearing?
Do I have to give my name for the public hearing? Okay. Since she's not here.
Ma'am, ma'am, who is controlling the mic? Who?
0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I, I just wanted to say that I am in total support of the special use request of NOR.
Ms. Gerald, Ms. Gerald, Ms. Gerald.
I like the Longboard metal siding. I think it's going to be great for Greenfield, and I'm looking forward to it. And let's put some diabetic-friendly food restaurants in your retail facility. Thank you.
This is the last time I'm going to address this issue. If anyone who comes to the mic and they do not give us your name and address, you will not be allowed to speak, and you will be escorted out of this room. We have rules for a reason, and we just can't have individuals come up acting like this is a playground. The public hearing is still open? Do we have anyone else? The public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr.?
Would you like to make a motion, please?
Yes, sir.
I will move PSLU-
I'll move PSLU-17-0012, special use request of NOR.
Support.
Okay, we have a move by Mr. Focassi and supported by Mr. Manobom that we approve the special use request number PS.
Shouldn't we have had the recommendation read in?
Well, if you make it subject to the recommendation.
Recommendation's in the minutes.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Move by Mr. Focassi and supported by Mr. Manobom that we approve special use request In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The item is approved.
Our, our next item for your consideration is the specific site plan review request, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Mr. President?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Um, I was reading the, the minutes from the planning commission, and I noticed that the parking structure, because we're taking part of it down, which I think is a great idea, because every time you drive by it, why would you want a parking structure that close to a major road? But, um, and I like the design. The, I, there were some back and forth with what, how much they're over or how much they're under in their parking spaces.
Right.
I know they're going to need a waiver for that.
That's correct.
But at some point, it went from five percent to just over ten percent.
Well, the, um, they reworked the site plan with the tenant space to be just under ten percent. And there is no guarantee, but that's the threshold, the maximum threshold that the ZBA has gone by as far as granting waivers for parking, is try to be under that ten percent. I went by there today, right at rush hour, evening traffic, and the Nine Mile parking right around the building was, was pretty full. But the entire perimeter was empty. There was hardly anybody on the north side. There was less than twenty percent of the entire first floor of the parking structure being occupied, and the top two floors were closed. So with the balancing and rebalancing of the site, the restriping of the parking lot and the tenant mix, with over a thousand parking spaces, we think that, that they can work well within. I've talked to Mr. Nager. Other things that they can do is delegate tenant parking on the perimeter or in the parking structure on the above floors. And he's stated that with additional lighting and security to the parking structure, he thinks that more people will be using it.
Okay.
So for, for all those reasons, we're comfortable with that, within that maximum waiver of no more than ten percent.
Okay, I just wanted to, I was just curious where, where it finally fell. Because I know you were taking into account bike racks and then some of the tenant use.
Yeah, we gave them, we gave them some credit for bike racks, which we can do. Also, there are some employee showers, which helps encourage people to take public transit and ride their bikes. So we gave them a certain percentage credit for that. We spent a lot of time on a floor-by-floor analysis and a tenant-by-tenant analysis to, to make sure we had the right mix. And again, if you look at, if you look at what's happening today, and even with their future usage, we feel comfortable. It's in their best interest to, to make sure they have adequate parking.
Yeah, well, I think the, the best worst-case scenario is he runs out of parking, which means that the people are hopefully using that building and not another building nearby. But that was, that was my question. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, hold on, Mr. Mayor?
Um, Mr. Nager, remind me again, this building was built late sixties?
I believe it was, yes.
Yeah, um, couldn't find the exact year, but this is, um, it's an important corner in our city, and, um, I'm very pleased to see this reinvestment in this building. And I also, to my recollection, this is probably one of the most significant improvements that the owners, former owners, and now you have put, put forth or advanced for the advanced building. And the, the total of, your estimate of the total cost of the construction roughly?
Well, um, thank you, and, and it is, it is a very iconic corner, and we are very proud to be involved in the community, partner with Southfield on this. And, you know, I don't know if you're familiar, but we also have a center down the street. I'll make it brief. And so, you know, we, we take pride in, in, in this, and, and we also own the property down the street, Cornerstone Plaza. And we try to, we try to maintain that in a Class A fashion. So we're, we're excited about the opportunity here at the advanced building, and we're looking forward to giving this thing the, the facelift that it needs to keep it an important part of, you know, this corner of the Cornerstone District. With regards to the, the monetary improvements, we've budgeted, and, and it's under a million dollars. I don't know if the, the direction was the art, the art piece, but, you know, I think that, that's where we're at right now, and, and I think we're, we're under that threshold, so.
Well, honestly, I wasn't thinking so much about the art.
Okay, because that came up in discussion a few times.
That is a, a passion of mine, so I can understand why you would say that.
There was a piece that was mentioned earlier at the study session, which we, you know, we'd be happy to showcase at our building if, if the council wants to.
No, my real motivation is that, and I say this all the time, we're an established community, and I, uh, it's all about reinvestment and renewal, which you're doing here, which is important to us. And, um, honestly, I, the reason I was trying to nail you down on that is I have an, an address coming up next month, and I want to highlight pending council approval, of course, people like yourself or companies like yours that come forward and are spending significant dollars on reinvesting in, um, our existing landscape, cityscape, so.
Well, thank you. And, uh, again, in, in the study session, I don't know if it was mentioned, but a lot of people from outside, you know, east coast, west coast, New York and California had taken a look at this thing. And, you know, a lot of people frankly were, were not interested. We happen to live here. We know the area. We know the, you know, we know the building. We know the history. And to me, it, it looked like a tremendous opportunity for us to take this thing and potentially turn it around. When it comes to this particular retail center that we're going to put here in the front, while that, you know, is probably going to be under a million dollars with the total improvements, there's other improvements going on ins, inside the building, hallways, corridors, restrooms, roof, elevator. So there's a lot of things happening there. And again, we're, we're, you know, optimistic and excited to do these things one by one. We're, we're, you know, we'd love to be able to, you know, we'd love to be able to have this done tomorrow. It is going to be a process, so we ask that everyone, you know, give us some time to execute our plan. But again, we've, we've put our best foot forward. We've drawn it up and, and planned properly for the future, and, you know, step by step, we'll try to, to take this thing to where it needs to go. So thank you.
Well, you and your father certainly have a track record of being Southfield believers. And you're right, there are doubters out there, but I salute you for that. And again, thank you for making this reinvestment, you know, an important corner.
Thank you.
I just also want to mention again, we do have a recommended resolution. There are two waivers required. One is for the parking, as Mr. Manobom had mentioned, and there's a small landscape buffer waiver. But I will point out, currently, there's no landscaping along Greenfield, and they'll be installing just over seven and a half, about seven and a half feet. There's a grade situation. So it's a minor buffer, but it will be providing landscaping buffering where one doesn't exist at all. And that's listed in our recommended resol, resolution for approval.
Terry, I think there was one other question by somebody in the public.
About the tenant mix, if you know what the tenant mix is.
And with regard to the tenant mix, to address that, we, we don't have any signed leases yet. And, you know, there, there was a, a name on the, on the site there, but nothing is done with that. So we're looking at a mix of restaurants and, and small amounts of retail, maybe a, maybe a salon, maybe some services, and, and probably some restaurants, because that seems to be a popular, a popular business right now. So nothing is, nothing specifically, but we, we will begin marketing as soon as, as soon as we can.
Ms. Morris?
Yeah, I know that there used to be, I don't know if there still is, a salon on the, in the lower level of the advanced building that's been there for many, many, many years. Would they be extended an opportunity if you decided to put a salon in the new area? Would they be extended an opportunity to lease that space?
Uh, yeah, everybody would be, would be extended that opportunity. And sometimes other salons would complement other salons. So, you know, different restaurants complement others. So I don't necessarily think it would be detrimental if anything would be helpful. But yeah, certainly they'd be, they, they would be reached out to as well as everybody else in the, in the building. So.
Thank you.
We're, we're, we're open to leasing.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Focassi?
I'm at the floor. I, you can sit down, Mr. Nager.
Thank you.
I, I looked at this site plan, and my concern is that, not with this one, but the amount of, of stores that we're allowing in the strips, for example, Home Depot on Southfield Road, and Michigan Bank was taken down. If you get there at a certain time, there's no parking in front, and that's where everybody wants to park. And, and I look at across the street, the same thing is happening at the Travelers Towers. You go to a certain time during lunch hour, you can't park. And, and you try to park where the office people park, and that's full. So I just want to know that we changed the, the amount of parking space per square foot. But in these instances, I think, I think we're not, depending on what is being used on those strips. If, if it's a business that people go into and stay a long time, then there's no turnover, and that takes up space. So I just want to be, throw a precaution on these strips that, that we don't want to see the growth take place, but we do want to make sure that they work.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're correct. And what we try to do is find out what a, a balance of restaurants versus retail, so we can calculate parking properly. The other thing, when, not to tie up this, but as we go through the zoning ordinance, for some reason in the past, the council adopted that freestanding retail had to have at least four tenants in it. Otherwise, it becomes a special use, and that's maybe something we need to look at. So that's causing more tenants to be in these, these retail spaces if they want straight site plan, because that's what we require. Otherwise, if it's less than that, it has to be a special use.
See, uh, the, um, the thing that's happening is that the lunch crowd starts, starts around eleven o'clock, sometimes it goes to one, one-thirty, two o'clock. And during that period of time, if they're all restaurants, and they'll move and eat and leave, then you have a problem. And so I just want to, to state, depending on what is the user.
Right.
Is how much parking you really need. And I'm just wondering if, if in case even that down the street here on Evergreen Road, with all the restaurants there, you can't find a parking spot at noon.
Right.
So anyway, even with the back parking lot.
Yep.
So, um, I know that we changed it. I don't have a problem with this particular petitioner, but looking at any of the strip units that are being placed now, I, were, were there conjunction with the main user that we have enough parking for the main user? And we don't get greedy, say, you know, add another tier on top of it?
Right, you're absolutely right. The only other thing I'll say is we did, we did look at making sure there's pedestrian connections, so if there is a tenant in the building, they can walk over to the retail center as opposed to getting their car and driving over. So that should help a little bit.
See, those people that don't park, they don't, across the street, they don't park in the, in the parking deck. They, probably the first floor, walk across the street. But sometimes the other layers are probably half-full, but the parking on the, on the main parking spots are jammed. And so I just throw that up because of the, depends a lot on the user of the commercial
We have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the site plan, PSP-17-0010, the site plan review request for NOR.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Focassi and supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve site plan number PSP-17-001. In the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Site plan number PSP-17-001 is approved. We will now go into communications. But before we go to communications, um, council has rules of conduct in this particular chamber and also in, in our particular, in any settings that we have. And these are written. And this one here pertains to, before we get into communication, no speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks on any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. Now wait just a minute while this is going up. It's getting noisier.
It needs an oil change.
It's a grease. Red.
Little WD-40.
That makes a difference. Okay, well, I will start over, because this, this is fairly important. I mean, it's, um, that we have rules of conduct in any setting that we have. And I've said this before, we make rules here that impact one to almost two-hundred thousand people in the city of Southfield. And the people have to understand that these, these are rules and orders that we make, they are made in a very serious, professional manner. Some will start over. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks on any officer, employee, or city council member, or any other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No persons shall use threatening or abusive language when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council. And may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuse, refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. With that, we will open communications session with Ms. Pamela Gerald. Please give us your name and address.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for that point of order. My name is Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. I'm appalled at the thought that the mayor, the city administrator, and the council president is pushing to consolidate our multimedia services, or Cable-15, with the community relations department. Now, I'm sure at some point in time, it's going to come up about the fact that community relations used to be over business and economic development, they used to be over cable, they used to be over code enforcement, and a few other departments. And back then, when we had our previous community relations director, there was some inappropriate behavior that was going... behavior that was going on in the city, it was purportedly some sexual harassment and creating a very hostile environment for several of our female employees that were working here at the time. As a result of that, to avoid a lawsuit, those departments were taken out of the jurisdiction of community relations, so I am not in favor of any kind of consolidation with Cable 15 and with community relations. Now, if you want to consolidate something, since what you want to do with cable and community relations is merely personal, why don't you think about consolidating business and economic development, which is basically not doing what they should do, and consolidate it with planning, and we can create a new division and name it Planning Economic and Business Development, so Shelley Freeman would work for Terry Crowe and not be a director with a manager's classification. Um, your moral compass seems to be off, you know, you want to read the rules about the conduct, you want to enforce the food and drink, well, since your moral compass is off, let me refresh your memory, when you ran for council, my husband and I gave you a fundraiser, you never filed it on your campaign finance report, and you're the numbers man, you want all these reports, why didn't you file our in-kind donation to you on your report? Now, you're also the treasurer of the Democratic Club, your moral compass is off again, because you gave the mayor a check reimbursing the Democratic Club because he paid some expenses, you didn't get authorization from the Executive Club or the Executive Committee to do that, or the Democratic Board of Trustees, so when you're talking about enforcing, look at what you're doing since you became the council president, it's went up to here, you let it went to your head, or you've let it go to your head.
That is up. Thank you.
Thank you, President. Thank you, President.
Next, uh, next individual being addressed, um, for communication, Mr. Gerald, Gerard Mullin, please give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Three nights from tonight, on February 15th, at 6:30 PM, a public hearing will be held by this council in these very chambers. Council will be seeking public comments on whether this city should ask the State Liquor Commission to revoke Bar VII's liquor license because of shootings and other rowdy behavior having taken place on Bar VII's premises recently. Well, that was the game plan up to last Monday, February the 5th. At the February 5th council meeting, council deviated from the game plan and agreed to enter into a tentative agreement with Bar VII, plus council also still plans to hold the public hearing on February 15th, at which time council will not make any decision. In other words, a moot public hearing with council abstaining from any vote. The only problem with this moot public hearing is this, council members cannot abstain from voting, it is illegal. Why? Because the city charter says so. The charter makes voting mandatory on any resolution placed before council. In this case, the resolution is contained within the public hearing legal notice regarding Bar VII, published on January 18th, 2018. There are only two exceptions to this rule of not being able to abstain, both which don't apply to the current Bar VII resolution, and I refer you to Section 11.21, 11.21 of the city charter entitled Abstentions From Voting, and I quote, "A member of council may only abstain from voting on a question in which he or she either has a financial interest other than the common public interest, or if voting on such question would raise an appearance of impropriety. The basis for abstention shall be stated on the record," unquote. That's charter law, council's bible, enough said. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public communications. We're now rolling to the, uh, council section, and we have some expense accounts.
Mr. President, I'd like to move approval of the travel expense for Dan Brightwell for attending the zoning board and appeals workshop.
Support.
Been moved and supported, moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Mrs. Morris, that we approve the, uh, travel expense report for Daniel Brightwell. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, Madam Clerk, okay?
Mr. President, I'd also like to move approval of the travel expense for Donald Focassi, attendance to the Simcock 50th Anniversary Exhibition.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Cruz and supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the expense report for Mr. Donald Focassi, attending the 50th Anniversary for Simcock. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I abstain, Mr. Chairman.
It is approved. And Mr. Focassi abstained. Additional council items, Ms. Mandelbaum.
Um, a few housekeeping notes. This, um, the 14th, um, of February, just in, uh, two days' time, is the last day to pay your 2017 winter taxes without any penalty, so please make sure that if you have to pay those taxes, uh, you go to our treasurer's office, they're open eight to five. Also, um, in two weeks, on Monday, February 26th, from 6:30 to 8:30, there will be an organizational meeting for the Southfield Lathrop Crop Hunger Walk, um, they're looking to get more people involved, it's a fundraiser where they provide many different services, so they are looking for volunteers to help organize that, and again, that is taking place on Monday, February 26th, from 6:30 to 8:30, um, at the LTU campus in the, uh, management building, room M 218. Uh, if you have any questions, you can contact our human services department. Also, um, this coming Sunday, the 18th, we have, uh, Southfield Winter Fest that will take place here in the pavilion from 2:00 to 4:30 PM, there will be free ice skating, face painting, uh, bounce houses, um, horse-drawn carriage rides, unlike last year where there was no snow and it was probably about 60 degrees, uh, this year I think we'll have enough snow to make it feel like a real winter fest, and, um, again, it's all free, there's going to be a lot of activities, free ice skating, um, insider tip, they run out of skates quickly, so if you do want to go free ice skating, please arrive promptly at, uh, 2:00. Um, I also want to give a special thank you to our Public Works Department for plowing. Um, I know that there were probably a lot of residents who were frustrated that their streets were not plowed by Friday morning, um, but the city does have 246 miles of street to plow, they did their best, they, I know they started with the residential neighborhoods on Saturday towards the evening, um, and by Sunday, I think they were, by Sunday evening, I think they were pretty much done with all the residential streets, but that's, they were working, um, 12-hour shifts, nonstop, to make sure that their roads were passable for emergency vehicles, and then especially for residents, so, um, thank you to, to Public Works, and also to our, our Parks Department, because they also do some plowing for parks, parking lots, um, and even, I think, at City Hall, they're the, they're the ones who plow City Hall, so thank you to, uh, all those who are working those long hours. Have a good evening.
Mr. Cruz?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to get an update, a couple of weeks ago, I'd asked the administration for, uh, a vacancy, kind of track and report from Human Resources, that would give us a listing of all of our vacant positions and status of those, and, uh, hopefully to be followed by a staffing plan to fill them, I just wanted to know, uh, from the administrator or, or HR, who's here, I think, uh, to let us know where we're at.
The HR department has started to gather, uh, the information, uh, we have not finalized, uh, the report, I can tell you that, uh, you know, one of the questions was hiring, from 2010 till, uh, June of 2014, there were four hires, since July of 14, there have been over 150 hires, we're breaking that down, uh, by department and going through, I think right now, if you go to the city's website, there're prob, I think there's six or seven positions posted, uh, we're continuously go through police and fire, but we are still working on that report.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that the Finance Committee had met in February, uh, as a matter of fact, just last Friday, and the reports per the new ordinance were received from the clerk as well as the treasurer, and we will be, uh, passing that information on to council probably this week, we're waiting for Irv to just, uh, update his, summarize it a little bit more, and we're going to bring that to you, so I want to say thank you to both the clerk and to the treasurer for getting those reports to us in a timely manner. Thank you.
I want to address, um, Mrs. Gerald's, uh, question about my finance campaign report, and, uh, when this came up last week, the next morning, I called the Oakland County, uh, Board of Elections, uh, who we submit our campaign finance reports to, and I explained the situation to them that I didn't have the receipt, nor that I have a dollar amount when I submitted those reports, uh, they said I can file an amended report, which I would do for 2015, uh, and I have a letter just drafted that was going to Ms. Gerald, uh, and I was going to CC the city attorney and, but I, given that, given that we've been dealing with a lot of snow, uh, and I do have snow that I had to clear myself, and I forgot, I left home and left that draft, so just as soon as I get it, I will pass a letter to Ms. Gerald stating, if you can give me a dollar amount.
I gave you the receipts.
Hold on, I, the receipts are misplaced, that's why it's not in my, uh, campaign finance report, the election people indicated it's totally appropriate for me to file an amended return, and the moment this ha, happened, the next day, I, I spoke to the attorney, and I spoke to the city administrator, explained the situation to them, so the report will be filed, and just as soon as I get you a note, uh, telling you to give me your best guess, or if you have a receipt, that report will be, so, the, that's, this is, um, so that particular item is, is taken care with respect to my campaign finance report, uh, from 2015.
Thank you.
And, um, well, I'll leave it at that. Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, you have anything?
Well, once again, Councilman Mandelbaum, um, did most of my report, I thank you for that, uh, I would add that, um, uh, on the snow removal, we did receive a number of calls, um, emails and calls, uh, over the weekend and today, uh, we do have crews out that are out, uh, in 12-hour shifts, um, from 11:00 to 11:00, um, uh, they have 12 hours off, they come back for another 12 hours, um, and on Sunday, uh, the crews, because of the freezing rain, were pulled from neighborhoods, uh, to resalt roads, um, I was pleased to see today, as I was driving around the city, that many of the streets are totally, uh, clear, I'm not talking, uh, neighborhood streets, but I'm talking, uh, our major roads where the most traffic is, and many of them were even dry, um, so, uh, this particular storm was pretty rough on us, uh, on our crews, because, um, it snowed all day Friday, we had another two inches on Saturday, and then we had that, uh, freezing rain, uh, approximately an inch yesterday, so, uh, it's been a, this was a, a challenging, uh, event, but all neighborhoods have been cleared, as well as, um, the city did bring in outside contractors to help, uh, so we, um, we do our level best, and of course, as, um, Councilman Mandelbaum noted, we had, um, we do have 200 and, I think it's 46 miles of local roads to do, um, I know if Mr. Frazier would, was, uh, would be with us, or if he were here tonight, he would, um, always advise people to shovel their snow sort of up from their driveway, uh, along the curb, so that less gets pushed, you know, onto the driveway apron, uh, keep that tip in mind for next time, I don't think we're done with, uh, snow this winter. Um, I would like also to make mention, uh, just a shout out to, uh, Rosemary Allen, uh, Rosemary, um, uh, was selected this year as the 2018 Martin Luther King Community Service Award Honoree.
(applause).
One is still with us, congratulations, um, and, uh, the, uh, for those that don't know, uh, this is the Martin Luther King's, um, uh, highest, uh, award, and it goes to a person each year who exemplifies, uh, the spirit, uh, and message of, uh, the late Dr. King, um, and I think I'm going to conclude there.
Administration?
Uh, Mr. President, I too would like to just, uh, thank the, uh, Department of Public Works, as well as the Parks and Recs Crew on the snow removal, since Friday night, uh, 11 o'clock, we've had crews working, uh, 20, 20, 12-hour shifts, 24-hour seven, uh, I'd like to thank our residents and our business community for their patience, we will be doing a review as to how we can make snow removal better, you know, it's a good opportunity, we've had more snow this year than we have had the last two years combined, and when you get a big hard, almost a foot of snow, it's an opportunity to review our procedures and our procedures, and we are going to take a look at, at that, uh, we did have our private contractors in use, as the council's authorized, and we're going to take a step back and look at that, uh, the next couple of days, we got some warm temperatures, uh, we're going to hit 41, uh, degrees on Thursday, and they're talking rain, so we are concerned about the challenges of freezing ground and water, but we will continue to manage the situation, and again, thank you, uh, for the community, for their patience on the snow removal, a foot of snow is very challenging for all of us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to add one thing to, uh, the snow removal, and, uh, yes, they're doing a great job, but the homeowners can help out, because, uh, that where the manholes are, they're, uh, when they plow, they fill up some of the manholes, if you go out, get a shovel and clear it out without rain coming, and, uh, to get rid of the water would be make, make things a lot easier for everybody.
Madam Attorney?
Uh, I don't have anything this evening, uh, the mayor did want, uh, a reminder of the meeting on Thursday at 6:30, the public hearing regarding the, uh, Bar VII liquor license, and so we'll, we'll make that reminder.
In this room.
In this room, yes.
Okay. Clerk, Madam Clerk, Treasurer, not in the room? Just, go ahead.
Just one reminder, we didn't have anything on our agenda or any updates tonight regarding the Sapphire Apartments, but I just want to let you, the residents, know that we are on top of it, we are receiving weekly reports, and we are still having our building inspectors go out on a daily basis, uh, staying in touch with each one of you, so don't think just because we did not mention the Sapphire tonight that we are not still working on it, we are, we are very concerned, and we are staying on top of Sapphire Apartments, so just so you would know, thank you.
Mr. Brightwell, on that regard, um, I actually got a call on Saturday from a resident of Sapphire who called to tell me that she had a hot shower, and she has heat in her apartment, uh, and she was so excited that, uh, she picked up the phone and called me at home.
Very good.
If, if I may, Mr. President?
Yes.
They are within, we have sent a number of letters and requirements that they have within 30 days, they're probably within 23 days, also, there are a number of items that are going to move forward to the Legislative Committee dealing with boiler notices and requirements. dealing with boiler notices and requirements at the state, as well as elevators. There's been some engagement. I know a number of council people have spoken with our lobbyists, and I've had some conversations with our lobbyists as well. But there, we do have some work that needs to be done with the state elevator process, as well as the licensing of boilers by the state of Michigan and how they impact the local community.
Definitely. With respect to Sapphire, we did have a regularly scheduled meeting for the next four months with the management and the owner of Sapphire. The city administrator, myself, Legislative Director, and not Legislative, but Neighborhood Services, and the mayor. So there's a scheduled meeting that I insisted on the last time we met with them to give us an in-person update on the Pacifics of what's going on and the improvements that are being done there. Assessor, engineer, we have nothing to schedule. We have no ordinances. I'm sorry, ma'am, who are you representing? I'm sorry, ma'am.
I was just going to ask if we could honor Mr. Art Van. I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Art Van.
The what?
Mr. Art Van, who passed away today. He was a pivotal part of the business community.
Oh, okay.
And I just wanted to see if council could acknowledge him and have a word.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I just wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. We'll take that up. We have no ordinances. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.